The rigor meeting of the Scott Connerville City Council is not now in session. We will stand and I will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Reverend Doug Barton will now lead us in invocation.
Let's bow and pray. Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day you have given us and it gives us the hope of spring and even nicer days. Father, we thank you for those who shepherd our community. We thank you those who serve and protect. Thank you, Father, for our mayor and we just pray for this council that you would guide and direct them tonight and help them make the tough decisions that need to be made and bless them and guide them. We pray all this in your precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Okay, please turn off all your phones and pagers. Okay, we'll now have roll call.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Here.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Councilman Nettie?
Councilwoman Durham?
Present.
Councilman Frank?
Present.
Councilman Bishop?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Here.
Okay, you have the reading, you have the minutes from February 16, 2016. Is there any additions or corrections? Is there any additions or corrections? If not, I need a motion to pass as is.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of passing the minutes of February 2016? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, in new business, we will have Fire Chief Troy Tipton.
Got some stuff to lay out. Need you to bear with me a little bit, I've been fighting the flu. Safer Grant has opened up again and we'd like to apply for it. Like to give you a brief history about the grant and how it affects us and why we would like to apply for it. The grant, well first start off with, Fire Department provides fire protection for the community. Also, we're a part of kind of economic development. A lot of you don't realize that, some of you haven't been over really to talk to us about what we do. What we do is, the insurance rate for businesses and your homeowners is set through what's called ISO. The mayors are all familiar with it and Mr. Nettie would be if he was here. Your ISO rating is set by 50% Fire Department, 40% Water and 10% Dispatch. It's your ability to fight fire in your water flow. So that affects whether or not your businesses can come to here and stay and how we fight fire. So we are a big department of economic development, whether you realize it or not. In 2001, the federal government realized that they were giving money out for fire stations and fire trucks and stuff like that. They were still seeing a lot of fire deaths and things like that and they realized that they needed to take another approach as far as getting more manpower online and to get fire deaths down. Out of the top 30 industrial nations, I think we was ranked by 24th or 25th and that's just not acceptable at the time. And 2001, we had a manning of 39, which meant that we had about, the standard that we're held accountable to is NFPA 1710, which meant our rating of what, we had 12 men respond when we had a full shift and a nine-man minimum. A full shift was responding at 80 man, 80% of the manning standard and about 60% when we wasn't at a minimum standard. So, and we had an ISO rating of six. And Chief Bennett took over in 2000, in 2003, working real hard with getting the department going and everything. He was able to get our ISO rating down to a five. And that's real good for our city our size in the state of Indiana. Right now, we still carry an ISO rating of a five. Okay, through the years of 2000 to about 2008, you know, you all know what happened with the Visteon, lost the Visteon and the economic downturn. We've lost to attrition our manning and we're down to where we have a seven-man minimum right now. A seven-man minimum puts us at a, reaching our percentage of about 46% of the standard when we respond and sometimes we run out at a six-man, which is less than 40% of what the standard requires us. The standard means that we roll up on a fire and we were able to start our attack within eight minutes. And if we don't get in there and get you within eight minutes, your chance of survival is really not very well. So what we're asking for is for you to consider the Safer Grant. Now, what I was gonna talk to you about the Safer Grant about is Safer, is a very good program. In 2011, they tried to do away with it and I had the opportunity to actually go to Washington with our State Union and speak up there and we were able to get it when some waivers put on it. Originally, it was kind of like the FAST program, I believe it is. What, is it COPS program, what's it called?
COPS.
Yeah. It had a two-year, or you had to have two years and then you had to keep them for a third. Now, we just have to keep them for two and we don't have to guarantee them the third. So if we have an economic hardship, we don't have to keep them after the second year. There's no match money. If we have a hardship, we don't have to keep them. We can lay them off if something happens. The only thing that they require you to is during the performance period of the grant, the two years, if someone leaves, you have to keep the number that you start with unless you lose a tax, your tax base shrinks or something, then you have to keep what you start with. Unless your tax base shrinks, then you can file for a hardship. So it's a win-win situation. We were able to get the rules really good and we're asking that you consider applying for this grant.
Will you tell them how many firemen we're gonna lose in the next four years?
Right now, we have.
Retirement, not retirement-wise, not.
Well, we have.
Potentially, that's what we're saying.
Well, right now, we have three signed up that I know that's leaving. We have two that's gonna be replaced immediately that this program will not affect, I'm sure. But if we was to be awarded this program as soon as it, Diane just told me that it could, we could be awarded as soon as June. If we was awarded as soon as June, we could reap the benefit to replace the ones that are leaving already in June. So we have a fireman leaving in June, one leaving in November, one leaving in early spring and then there's more that's gonna be leaving after that, or potential for leaving. We're getting to be a very old department. It is a young man's game. We are an older department. The guys behind me are the young ship.
Is there a match on this grant, Diane? Strictly, if we get it, it's our money, right?
If we have to pay overtime, like if we had to call them in on fires, we would have to pay their overtime cost. So if we was to have to call them in on a fire, we would have to pay their overtime cost. We do have to equip them. Chris, Ty and Chief Kettering are checked today and with David retiring out on the medical and John leaving and some other, the part-time program not working, we do have enough gear that we can equip them with the turnout gear. So we really believe that there's not gonna be much of a cost at all, that our budget will support the cost that we're looking at.
What's the full shift run? You said minimum seven and that 2001, the minimum was nine and the full shift was 12. What's the full shift run now?
We're running eight-man shifts right now. We would like to get up to nine or 10. If we was to ask for four, that would put us two shifts at 10 and one at nine. You would see a total reduction of our overtime except for FLSA. Would you realize that FLSA is a federal law? And we cannot skirt around that.
Well, we talked about that, that's something I talked a couple weeks ago, about the use of the Kelly Day. You said you can get some information.
Kelly Day would create approximately 150 more days off, which would, which, when you do that, that creates more chances of overtime. So that's, you know, I'm sure the guys would like to have more days off, but we just don't have the manpower.
I know you said you worked it up and you just never, and you may not get the things to me and I'd like to see that at some point.
Yeah.
Kind of laid out on paper.
Are you talking about instituting the Kelly Day again rather than the?
No.
For the.
Cause I don't remember the Kelly Day.
We just talked about.
My guys don't like hearing this, but for the $10,000 to $12,000 that we put out for FLSA, I can't see the time, the cost. Could you pay them nine hours of half-time for every 21 days? Now, that's a negotiation thing, you're gonna have to work with them. If you wanna negotiate Kelly Days, you're gonna have to have more manpower, way more manpower than four men.
Well, we've talked about it, I just wanted to see it on papers too.
Yeah. It's way more manpower than needing four men.
And then for the Safer Grant, does it pay benefits as well or no?
Yes. Pays their insurance and everything. The only thing it doesn't pay is to equip them.
Or their overtime.
Or the overtime.
Would it pay FSLA?
Yes.
It would pay that?
It would?
Yeah. But it won't pay calling overtime, like if I have them on fire.
So Troy, are you here tonight just to ask for the council's blessing to apply for this?
Yes, we need your blessing, cause we do have to have your blessing to apply for it.
Is there, when's the deadline on this?
The 25th.
Of this month?
Yes.
Would you like a motion?
Is there any more discussion?
You gonna ask for four in the application or are you just applying for the grant?
We have to ask for a specific number.
A specific number?
Yes.
And how many we're asking for?
Four. Yeah, I, me and Harold felt that four is what we felt when the, Harold.
Yes. I tell you, the Fire Department's been working with me, they've been working short and everything. They could've, they could've had a guy called in to work overtime, but they decided to work with six men instead of calling the seventh one in. So they've been very hopeful with the budget and everything, so I think it's one thing that we're waiting on, see how we were gonna do on this and stuff. And sure, of course, the negotiations start here in a few days from now or a few weeks anyway. So we just figured, you know, this is a way to go right now, let the, let the federal government pay some of this.
Do you have any paperwork on this?
Yeah. And what I don't have, I can get to you, I can bring it to you tomorrow. Like I said, I've been home sick with the flu all day. I'm sorry, I was gonna bring it all, I've been six since Saturday.
Okay, then, you know, with no more discussion, I'd like to have a motion to support the Safer Grant.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I know with the FAST Grant, it was tied to also having a union contract in place. That's why we weren't able to play for the last one last time. Does that hold true for this one as well?
Diane, I don't believe it is, do you? But we do have a contract in place, right?
Yeah, but it's just, it's up this year if I'm correct. So I just wanna make sure that's.
The contract's good till the?
End of the year.
January 31st, right? So the problem with the last time was the contract was even already expired before we applied for the grant.
I see that paper.
What one do you wanna see? I don't believe.
Whatever you got.
Well, that's the standard for me.
Handing mine, Troy.
I think I got a question answered right here. That'd be handy for everyone to have.
Yeah.
I can run and print you up, print it out and bring it back to you if you want.
Do the same things?
Yeah, let me see, I'll pick up there.
We have it till the 25th, Phil, so.
Yeah, but we've gotta stay on, we've gotta, we need an answer tonight, cause it's really complicated. I think that wrote all over this.
Well, we already have a motion and a second and I've asked for more discussion. Is there any, I've asked for a roll call, but please.
Councilwoman Durham?
Yes.
Councilman Frank?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
At this point, with just getting the paperwork today, no.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Nettie?
Yes.
Okay, Troy. Passes six to one.
Thank you.
Okay, Diane, can you come up and talk about Resolution 2016-3?
Yeah. Gabe, I have more, I can run up to school to you tomorrow.
If he's dropped the office, up to the office.
And Gabe, everything's available online too.
Thank you.
We're just typing.
Fire Act. Just type in Fire Act Grant and it'll take you right to it. Superior Oil has asked for a tax abatement. They are building, a new building to the north of them and they're actually adding on a new 12,000 square foot office building and laboratory and they're asking for a tax abatement for approximately, then, yeah, the estimated new, new building will be $3 million.
That'd be right where the old one, the old factory was, it burnt down?
Correct.
They tore it down?
Correct, yes.
That will beautify that corner.
Sounds like a nice.
Long time coming.
And secure their position here.
Yeah.
They will be asking for some equipment. I didn't have that ready for this meeting, so we'll, you know, do that at the next meeting when we set the public hearing and we'll ask for another public hearing.
Do you know when their plan on start construction?
I do not, do you?
Or George's fault.
Fault.
Pretty soon, yeah.
When was that?
They just, they just doing through the bidding process, but there's still a lot of other stuff, so they, we'll push, we like to start with the fault, is what they were saying in the bid.
Okay, this here just a resolution for us to advertise, so I'll need a, yeah, for a public hearing, so I'll need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Resolution 2016-3? Vote by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
And I'll have all that information for the public hearing in your next packet, okay?
Okay, Carol, Chief McQueen's, she will talk on item C.
This is the hearing, Craig, for the bailout tool, $1,000 for the canine.
But lean on Carol.
Are you clear that the bailout tool is what the dog for the canine? It's a temperature control device as well as the bailout tool that allows the canine officer to release the dog.
Assuming it passes, how long will it take to get ordered and installed?
You know, I didn't ask. I'm guessing just a couple weeks.
Okay, before that would have been.
Yeah.
Well, I also have to.
It kind of depends on how busy Phil is at the city's departments too. He's pretty good.
Before we spend it.
Pretty good. Phil's phenomenal.
Yes, he is.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Just for one, just for one, no?
Yeah, the other one's we got.
The other canine has one.
Okay, I didn't know that, sorry.
Officer Perry and canine, we all have one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'm gonna accept pending orders 3241.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of passing 3241 on first reading? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed on first reading, is there anyone wanna go into the, suspend the rules and go to the third and final?
So moved.
All in favor of suspending the rules? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, we'll go to third and final reading on pending orders 3241 for $1,000. Need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of passing 3241 on third and final reading? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next one's gonna be an interesting one.
Good job, appreciate it.
And we have John Baker to explain it.
Ordinance for Internal Control Standards pursuant to Indiana Code 511, whatever it is.
Go ahead, John.
Well, I can tell you what it is. It's State Board of Accounts Uniform Internal Control Standards for Indiana Political Subdivisions. It's about the 20 pages that I printed out here and I think Rosemary has, but you have the PowerPoint.
The full version.
The full version, yeah. I've tried to read this and I read it and reread it and I've gotten it very little out of it, I'm sorry. It's extremely difficult to understand, it's very complex and there doesn't seem to be anything I can really grasp.
That's a professional way of putting it.
But anyhow, that's cause I'm not an accountant and Rosemary is, so that's probably the reason. But we're required to pass it and then Rosemary has to put it into effect starting, well, June 30th was the deadline, is how it was called. So we, at a very minimum, the law requires us to have this passed in ordinance form by reference and that's what this ordinance does.
So state mandate, no matter what we wanna do, just for the matter.
Right.
Right.
You can implement your own, but you have to basically rewrite that manual. You can do your own standard, it does say that, but that's a lovely nightmare to do. It's not worth it.
Yeah.
No, you don't want to touch that.
No.
You can't understand that. Try to write something you can't understand.
State legislature does it all the time?
Yeah.
Money.
Good one.
Okay. Okay, you have, is there a motion and a second on pending orders 3242?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? John, you got anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, we go to the third and final reading on pending orders 3242. Need a motion and a second?
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, there you go, John.
Very interesting, Mr. Baker, thank you. Very interesting.
Okay, we go to item E, pending order 3243, it's vacating a public alley and we gotta see John on that one too.
Well, this is an ordinance to amend an ordinance vacating a public alley. I have the one that we had before and the legal description was incorrect. At the bottom, it says lot 50, 60, 85 and 86 in Joshua Highlands, first edition to the city of Connerville, being the alleys surrounding, I'm sorry, the lots surrounding the alley in question. Actually, that should be 59 instead of 50. 59, 60, 85 and 86. So it's a simple matter of making that change. All re-report this amended ordinance vacating the public alley and that will make the records correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'm gonna second pending orders 3243.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for pending orders 3243. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, suspend the rules for pending orders 3243, I need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll move pending orders 3243 to third and final reading, I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of passing pending orders 3243 for the public ride, for vacating a public alley? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's passed. Okay, need, under old business, did you want to say speak something that?
Yeah, we are our last nomination for the Urban Enterprise Association and I'll let Diane talk about that.
I've concated Karen Dixon, who is a resident of the zone and she has agreed to become a member of the board. I'd like to present her name for consideration.
Okay, Gabe, you wanna take care of that one?
Are there any other nominations for the Urban Enterprise Association? Saying none? Karen Dixon's it? She's good.
Okay, is there any further old business? Okay, we'll move to miscellaneous business. I just wanted to let you know that the lights on Park Road are being looked at by Lay's Wiring and also Lay's Wiring is looking at the lights up over on East, on the East Fifth Street Bridge, taking care of those. So those are, they should be on by the end of the month, I hope. And we've been working with Sugar Creek and that's going pretty well right now. Brad, would you like to say something on Sugar Creek? Just how things are going? I'm sorry, I put you.
Hi. It's a little hard to report on because it keeps changing. We've been looking at several.
Carol?
We've been looking at several different options. They were wanting us to study, looking to take an up to 3 million gallons, but now that's been cut back and it looks like we're talking about something different, so the board of works today approved the, Strand is kinda doing a feasibility study on it to look at if our waste treatment plant can handle up to 3 million, 2 million or 1 million. And we're just kinda rolling with the punches right now, trying to get prepared to participate in this project and I think there's still a little bit left to be decided about how it's all gonna work out.
And there's three entities, there's gonna be Milton, Western Wayne, Sewer District and Connerville's all looking at this, so right now, they're all working together on it and everything, so it's not out yet, it's not in yet, but there's a lot, there's still discussion going on.
Five or six political subdivisions involved in this, so you can imagine how tricky the whole thing is to put together, so.
Are you, Brad, excuse me, are you talking 3 million gallon a day?
Possibly up to it, that's been discussed.
Yes.
Have we ever handled that capacity before?
Yeah, we can.
With 50 on, I thought we did, with 50 on.
Yeah. We can handle it easy, we have to kind of reconfigure the wastewater plant a little bit to be able to take that amount again, but we can do it.
Have any of the pumps or anything frozen up since we haven't used that capacity in a while?
No, they rotate, they rotate a lot of that equipment in and out to keep that kinda thing from happening, but there's a, about half of that plant's been taken offline as far as the tank capacity and we would have to get that going again. It's pretty complicated, so we gotta be careful and make sure we make the right deal and do this all the right way.
You got a ballpark figure of what that would gross the city if we went to, say, 2 million?
No.
No, it's still.
We gotta, because the rate we're charging now might change, you know, it's just, we basically have to figure out what it's gonna cost us to take it and then set a rate to make sure we don't lose money on the deal.
Well, that's the reason I asked about the capacity.
I think this'll take months to put together and figure it all figured out, so we'll keep you abreast as we go along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Appreciate it.
Another thing, I wanna congratulate the Spartans for winning their sectional the other night and. other night and to celebrate, well, them going to the regional on the eleventh, on this next Friday, the eleventh, they're having Spartan Pride Day and they're encouraging everyone to wear red that day. So you got a red shirt, put it on, if you can get to the game, possibly go. And that's all I have. You got anything? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Kylie Elvin's gonna be a state as well for gymnastics.
We'd support her as well.
And I want to say, if you've been going to the games, they've been phenomenal. But I do want to congratulate the Spartanettes on that guy-girl dance. That was absolutely phenomenal. If you didn't go to that game and you missed that, you missed probably one of the best shows I've ever seen in the Spartan Bowl. And I just wanted to congratulate them, they probably don't get as much credit, but they did a phenomenal job, so come support your Spartans.
Chad, they do that guy-girl dance about every year.
Yeah, I know. But this one was phenomenal.
Yeah.
They got a standing ovation from them. Even the visiting crowd gave them a standing ovation and it was, they did a great job. Just wanted to congratulate them.
Okay, is there any, okay, we'll go to public forum now?
I have, I have one thing. The DNM signs, they're still there?
Yes, they are.
We gonna paint over them or what?
Yeah, we, you have any update on that?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are. I pass them every day.
I'm gonna get up here and talk with Leon and Tara.
Yeah.
The, I think I reported in the last meeting that Mr. Vedder, the owner of the building, has very graciously wrote the check and paid for those signs to be removed. And we've been in communication with the sign company, the original sign company that installed the signs, now in Lawrenceburg, and they are chomping at the bit to come up here and get them down, but it's a weather-related thing. When they take their bucket truck up to the building, there's some grassy areas and they do not want to destroy the grass. They don't wanna bog it down in a mud hole, so they're waiting for, and it looks like we're gonna get more rain, so, believe me, we want them down and I sent them that headline that the news examiner printed, you know, signs to come down, so that they know how badly we want those down.
I just wanted to check, cause I...
Believe it or not, it's not deterring people's interest in the building. In fact, it may be helping. I showed the building today to an individual who was very qualified in every way to purchase that building, if that's what he decides to do. And those signs didn't mean anything to him.
Okay.
Of course, he's also been keeping up with the story of the newspaper, too, so. Does that answer your question, Diane?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is it feasible those could be taken down from the roof? Safe, I should say.
That's the key and there's a liability involved and of course, this sign company is fully insured. I really thought about going up there and trying to take it down myself. That's how bad I'd like to have it taken down, but that would not be wise.
Okay.
Some of those signs are stacked down so low on the building that you couldn't reach over and do it safely, but I, same thought ran through my mind, to do that. Well, you know what we're gonna do?
Thank you, Dan.
You bet.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, somebody called me about the flasher on Western and was it sixteen?
Yeah, that, we're gonna turn that over to the state. We've turned a lot of things over to the state and we're still waiting, so.
What is it?
The school flashing sign.
No, not the school one, the stops, the stop.
At Eighteenth Street. At Eighteenth, Eighteenth and Western.
Oh, that one there?
All right.
Yeah, the four, the four-way stop is.
Oh, they're still, oh, that's the one that got knocked out?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still, they're working on it, they're working on it.
Okay.
We'll get it taken care of.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to mention a couple of things. There was a very damaging pothole on Waterley Road and the same day, I was gonna call the street department, they came out and fixed it, so I appreciate them jumping on that right away. It was not in a very good spot. Also, if you've not already recognized Darrell Drew, I'd like to recognize Darrell Drew for being at the swim meet, the sectional, that he was considered coach of the year.
Wow, well, congratulations, Darrell. Didn't know that.
That's great.
Is there anything else from the council? Okay, we'll go to public forum. Anyone out there got anything to say? No one's got anything to say?[1751.91]